Call this meeting to order. Please silence your electronic devices so we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation given by Councilmember Canelli, please.
Join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not through temptation, but deliver us from evil. The pledge, my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
You should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. If you can, please use the podium. Please state your name and address before giving your statement. You'll be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On the first bell, you have 30 seconds left, and on the second bell, I will stop you.
Ronald Jantsch.
Hello, my name is Ronald Jantsch. I live at 15 Otis Street. I bought my house 2020. It was a nice, quiet street, and a few months later, people bought the house across the street at 20 Otis Street. And from there, it's gone downhill as far as my quality of life, our neighbors' quality of life, I feel our safety. It's, there's constantly, well, in the beginning, there was constantly big parties, groups of kids, you know, nothing but trouble. And another problem was, you know, garbage, you know, blowing into my yard because they just throw it out the door and, you know, the animals get into the garbage bags, and it blows all over the place. I've witnessed some things, like I've called the cops because I witnessed one of the older kids pulling out what appeared to be a pistol out of one of the cars, carrying it low like this into the house. I don't know if it's a toy pistol, it should have the orange color on the end of the barrel. So it wasn't a toy, as far as I'm concerned. There's two people that used to live there, one's in prison and one's in jail. It's just, they have no regard for their neighbors at all. They treat people like garbage. And then in August was a topper when, on a Monday night at 11:30 in the evening, I was just falling asleep, and I heard a huge explosion right near the house. You could hear this rap, no hit in my house. And they lit off, it was no M80, it was like half stick of dynamite at least on the street. It was only 25 feet, 25 to 30 feet away from the gas main that goes into my house. That would have been the biggest tragedy that ever happened in Batavia, if that would have been damaged, it went up. That would have blown a bunch, all those houses up. And all those group of kids that were standing there would have been killed, and me too. Well, and she ran down the stairs, and I ran down the stairs and went out the door and go, "What are you guys doing?" And they're like, "Shut F up," to us, you know, telling her to shut up. And we called the cops, and then all the neighbors came around, had they had already called the cops. And when the cops got there, these people in 20 sat there and verbally abused us while we're talking to the cops and threatening us. They're saying like, "Yeah, wait till you go to work and see what happens to your house." Things like that. And I have a beautiful blue custom pickup truck that I've had, and the one kid was saying, "Yeah, see what happens to your truck when you're not around," stuff like that, you know, and the cops didn't do anything. They were like, "Oh, we really can't do anything until they do something." And I was like, "You're verbally abusing us and making threats, and you can't do nothing?" It was just ridiculous. Like I say, these people have no regards for their neighbors or nothing. It was a nice, quiet street, you know, and now it's, you know, like some of the other streets have gone downhill in Batavia. You know, it's, I mean, really, it's just a shame. And, you know, I kind of regret buying the house now. You know, I'm stuck for at least five years before I can try to sell it again because, you know. So, that's why I want to say, I hope the ordinances or things can be done, you know, like all night long, they coming in out playing their loud music all the time, you know, thumping, you know, middle of the night, and you hear thumping and thumping, and they keep the radio on the whole time while they're sitting in the driveway and they pull out. It's this, it's a very situation that I just didn't really expect to get into at my age. You know, I just want a nice, quiet existence, a residential neighborhood. And the other thing was, we had some great neighbors that lived across the street in 18, and they were, been terrorized so much that they sold their house and they're moving. And they addressed you, Chuck Styles, his name is, Chuck and Aaron Styles, they couldn't take it anymore, they, "Well, we're leaving." And so, that's pretty much what I have to say. Carol, do you want to? Thank you.
I'm just curious, you know, you're on Otis, right?
Yeah.
Is this a rental property?
No.
It's not.
They were...
These people own the house.
Yeah, they, they got, what was the mortgage company? It's an assistance kind of thing. They got granted some of the money, I believe.
Pat Stones.
Pat Stones or something like that. So they're aware, you know, the police are aware of it. Sean has put people down there, but then when they're there, they obviously behave, and then they leave, and then they start up. We are working with the Assistant City Manager, that's what we were talking about before the meeting. She's going to get code enforcement down there. We're going to try to bring all the agencies we can. We've already talked to the mortgage agency. They were shocked but unable to do anything. They didn't, they got past their screening and didn't appear that way, and they were kind of confused as to how they made it through and ended up with the house, but they're there now. Unsupervised children, that's being addressed. So there's a lot of things happening, but it takes a while for all that to...
So it's a family that's living here?
Right. And at least 11 people living in that house?
So I just want to clarify, it is, Pat Stones was the first time home buyer, but it is a USDA mortgage. We have reached out to USDA, and they claim there's nothing they can do.
So the Deputy Chief and I spoke the other day at the 911 Memorial, and he's well aware of it. We need to keep calling because when they don't call for a while, then police resources are directed somewhere else because they think the problem is under control because they don't hear anything. So they move it to another location that might need it. So I talked to them on Saturday, ironically enough, just before I got their phone call, and told them, you know, that we needed to stay vigilant on these properties. There's one or two or three throughout the city that needs to be looked at, and I'm sure they're going to do their best to take care of it. And on this particular case, they've been introduced to the Assistant Manager now, and she's handling the code part of it at this point, so she's going to look into that and try to get that taken care of.
Okay.
Rosemary?
These people have been coming to our meetings for the sixth word for about six months, different people. Carol and Ron have been calling me occasionally as to what's going on. I mean, we're at the point where it's ridiculous that they have to make a harassment charge against these people when we all know damn well they're in violation of the law and the fact that the city should do something about it. I mean, we have more power than these poor people on that street to destroy that beautiful, beautiful street. As far as social services go, if those kids are running in the street and everything else and throwing items at cars that are going by, the vulgar language and everything else that's going on, they should be taken away from that family. There's no ifs, ands, and buts about it. And to have 11 people in that household and to have all the other friends from over on Liberty Street coming down into that area, it's outrageous. I want you to know, outrageous.
I was just asking, I mean, isn't there some occupancy limit, number one? Okay, there's 11 people.
There is.
Okay. I mean, I don't think they're all, I don't think these people have 11 children.
We've looked into occupancy, and also when the police can charge, they will charge.
Right. And believe it or not, the most power...
There's a lot of things that don't rise to a crime.
The most power is the victim filing the complaint. That's, that's the best, most direct way to resolve the problem.
I was just wondering, to Pat Stone, there's nothing that they can do? Do you know what I'm saying? Saying, "Okay, listen, we went through this. We helped you get this house and..."
We tried, we tried. That hasn't worked. So we haven't given up on it, and this is a lesson because these, this type of property does pop up on various parts of the city. So we need a game plan, we need more of a consistent game plan to deal with this. So this is going to be a lot of effort to figure out, and maybe we'll keep track of what we do to resolve this so that if it pops up in another area, a different type of situation, we can use some of these tools and we can resolve it a little faster than six months that was been going on here.
You're right.
But again, the victim filing the complaint, and then the victim getting harassed after filing the complaint are serious things, and those things are the most direct way to address that and social services which has been involved.
That's right. Their lives are being threatened.
I totally agree. And I'm right down the street, and like I tell you, you call me if I'm home, in the case the other day I was on my way somewhere, but if you need support from me, I am right down the street. I'll walk down and help you guys, or any of my neighbors, like anything. If you need anything, a ladder, some water, paint, whatever, you let me know, I'm there, I'll help you out.
I'd just like the chief to say a few things if, if he can.
That's, the chief's going to want to speak about that, I guess.
Yeah, sure. So we have, obviously, we answered that call for services you guys had down there. It is an open investigation, so I can't really get into the details of it, but suffice it to say, there are charges pending. We will be dealing with that. We do have a presence down on the street as time permits and our call volume permits, but as you indicated, there are areas of the city that also need our services. So, you know, we're doing our best to try to split all of our, our resources and make sure that you guys are taken care of, so.
I have a question for the chief.
Hi, chief.
Chief, are any of these people that live in this house, are they people that have had, that we've had past experiences with?
Some of them are known to us, yes.
Yes.
Katie?
I'm honestly curious. Are you telling me that if two policemen stand there and hear somebody threaten my life, my property, everything about me, they really can't arrest the person?
Well, I can't speak to the facts of what occurred that night because I wasn't there. I will tell you that the definition of, the legal definition of harassment is much different than the casual definition of harassment. So given the circumstances, and again, I wasn't there, so, you know, I don't want to indicate either way. I'd have to review it and see what actually took place, which I'm sure the Deputy Chief did. I'm sure that Assistant Chief Camp took a look at the situation, and again, we're...
It hurt your stomach.
We'll move forward with, again, don't know what the situation was.
I mean, if you're a victim of crime and you file a complaint, and you're being intimidated on top of that, that ups it, that's a whole new charge on itself.
That's what I'm saying, there should be a charge about that.
And Chief, to my knowledge, lighting off a quarter stick's still illegal in New York State, correct?
Uh, any type of firework, that's correct.
And in fact, one of the things that I can only encourage people, if it's 2:00 in the morning, call, call the police. They're going to be over there in a few minutes if it's 2:00.
In this case, they touched a roundoff right behind the house while the police were right up front.
That's right.
So, and then they, they looked, but there was nobody there. And then it's like, "We didn't do it," and that, that's the kind of cat and mouse game they play.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, but eventually, it's been my experience that eventually, something is going to come to light, and we'll be able to, you got pending over there, there was other things that happened a couple of weeks ago, and they made, they addressed some situation over there in reference to other agencies having interests in people, and I can't discuss that, but they removed some people at that point. So that made it a little better for a short period of time, and then other people kind of rose to the occasion, and then they took over and started causing problems. So it's a lot going on there, but again, every little thing, you need to call so that we can address it and document it, and those things accumulate. Over time, we can show a pattern of constant harassment, and then that might fit some of the definition over a period of time. But if they don't have the means to actually physically harm you at that moment, and there's an officer standing there and they're 20 feet away across the street, that's not really harassment at that point. If they're in your face and they're making contact with you, yeah, you got something there. But with the officer there, it was all talk, and, and they knew they could talk, and you got a situation there. But we're gonna, we're all well aware of it, and we want to help you, and I want to help you as well.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
I still have the...
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Communications?
The YWCA of Genesee County submitted their application for a 5K on Saturday, October 16th, starting at 9:30 a.m. This will begin and end at 301 North Street, which is the YWCA building, and it's for domestic violence awareness.
Any questions or concerns on that? If you'll notice, right on the back of your agenda tells you the cost for all that. That was a $294 cost for the YMCA, or YWCA, and, and they are responsible for the cost.
Correct.
Okay, next one?
Batavia Rotary submitted their application for their cemetery 5K on Saturday, October 30th at 5:30 p.m. on Harvester, and they will run through three cemeteries on Harvester Ave.
Any questions on that? That one was a $98 cost, again, to be paid for by Batavia Rotary.
And the last one is the Alzheimer's Association looking to hold a walk on Saturday, September 25th, 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. This would start and end at Dwyer Stadium to raise awareness and funds for their programs, service, and research.
Any questions on that? And that one, I believe, had no cost. The next city council conference meeting will be held on Monday, September 27th, 7 p.m., City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. And now we have a presentation, I believe, Rachel?
We do, and we will need the projector down if you don't mind, please.
So you want me to move my...
Yes.
Want me to get my head out of the way?
Yeah.
Kathy, those people came from which street? Beck, you hit some of the kids' iron elbow. Sure.
You want me to give you the ding?
It's had vigilante take him out.
Yeah, avoid it. They'll get arrested in that, those days.
Do it the right way, they won't.
Yeah.
Mafia.
It's like 1970's.
Yes. I think so.
I'm Robbie Nichols, owner of the Muck Dogs. Mark Witt, our general manager. We wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you and talk to you about the first season of Muck Dogs baseball and what's been going on at Dwyer Stadium. Really want to thank the city workers, anything we needed, the city was there to help us. It was a great relationship. The police department, thank you for being there when we needed them. On a few nights, we became professional babysitters. And thank you to the firefighters when we needed them to come. We had some emergencies in the ballpark, and they were there really quick to help us, so. And thank you to you folks for entrusting us with the great baseball tradition that was here in Batavia, and hopefully we fulfilled our promises to make it a great, fun season for all the citizens. Here's a list of events. If you didn't get down to Dwyer Stadium, Mark, if you want to read the events?
Yeah, we hosted over 30 local high school baseball games with Notre Dame and Batavia High School being their home field through the months of April, May, and June. The KMS Dance competition was a little restricted at that time in May with COVID, still kind of guidelines happening. They needed an outdoor venue. We were able to have two shows, a 600 people max, so there was 1,200 people there. It was a great event. It's actually our first event we hosted. We did the Pride Festival in June. COVID guidelines changed, so we were allowed over 1,000 people. There was about 1,900 attendees, and it was a really good event. They've talked about loving the venue and doing it again. Challenger Division Baseball, no one's not familiar with the organization. It was a really, really unique event. Robbie always likes to talk about this one.
Yeah, I've been involved with Challenger for Division Baseball, so it's one of my touching things. We like to give back to the community, and if you could see these children's faces to play baseball, our whole team took part, and we're running with the children and spent the day with them and helped them swing a bat and do different things. So next year, if you get a chance, we'll let you know when Challenger Division Baseball is. It's more fun for me to see a Challenger game than it is to see a Muck Dog game, so it's really neat to see the kids out there with the big smiles on their face.
That was a big one for us. And then, of course, our Muck Dog games, they drew over 50,000 people to Dwyer Stadium throughout the two months. Glow Academy Youth Baseball hosted their championship games there. This was the first year we kind of brought to life the Battle of the Badges.
Who's got bragging rights?
There we go.
Fire department has bragging rights. It was a complete rainstorm, which our game was canceled, but the firefighters and police, the warriors they are, they stayed out there for a complete nine inning game in complete mud, and they had a great, fun day, and we look forward, the police said they're going to get the trophy next year.
Yes, that was a fun event. And then the KMS Dance had hosted some clinics throughout the month of August. Again, it's a big venue for outdoor space. Then there's going to be this Saturday, SUNY Geneseo, it's a collegiate baseball alumni tournament. And then, of course, you guys talked about, we're going to be using Dwyer for the Alzheimer's
The previous ownership in 2019 had 79 season ticket holders, and they averaged 951 fans a night. CanUSA Sports, we had 501 season ticket holders, over 400 new people, and we averaged nightly attendance of 1,778, an 87% increase, and we ranked 22nd in the country in the United States out of 168 teams. So we are quite pleased with the, the way our first season turned out, and now we'll have more time to build off of that in the future. One of the favorite, our favorite thing is the community. These are some, just some random photos. Mark, if you want to explain some different things that are going on here?
Of course, yeah. We, we, very accessible this year with the fans, as you can see to the left there, they just, the guys ate it up. The center right there, Back to Battle of the Badges, I think that was the opening ceremonies, the police and fire right there getting ready. And then, this is just a cool example, we had a little cheer team out to help cheer on the Muck Dogs, came out to a game, and we got them to meet the team. There they are, in the dugout hanging out before the game starts, one of our guys. Dewey there on the motorcycle with Paws for Cause for Stan's Harley, great sponsor, and they were doing an event, so that was fun. Then to the right is a great shot of what Challenger Division Baseball is. It's a super unique event, and we had the whole team involved. They had the park to themselves. It was a pretty, pretty awesome day. Very fun one, all the way to the left, we came up with a fun idea to have our entire team sing the National Anthem for a game. So the fans ate that up. I think it's going to be a tradition. And then speaking of traditions, brand new flair we added to Dwyer Stadium in the middle. It's called the Kids Run. It happens every game during the fifth inning. Any kid that's under 12 gets to run the bases. It's free to do. It's organized chaos, if that makes sense.
It's chaos.
It's a lot of fun. And then to the right there, players that are scratched for the game, we made sure to have them up front, meeting everybody before they walked in. And then this is a great example of being in the community because that's our community's dance team. We started that, they're all local girls, they're a huge part of the show. You can see them on top of dugout, it's a packed crowd. They are awesome, they are the energy, they are probably a good reason why the 1,700 fans are having a good time. And then just another quick shot of how easy it is to get an autograph from one of your favorite Muck Dogs.
A new event we have coming, Saturday, October 23rd, we're having Muck Dogs Monster Mash. We are opening the stadium, we've got a lot of great support, you see some of the sponsors there. It'll be free to get in for children, for youth to come around and walk through the stadium. We'll have it not so scary, but they'll get free, a lot of free candy as they walk around the entire stadium. So a new event we're bringing on Saturday, October 23rd, and has great support. And speaking of, all the sponsors have been great, the community has been great to work with, and so thank you for all the great sponsors. And again, thank you to you for entrusting us with the great, rich history, and we hope you didn't regret your decision of having CanUSA Sports here to run your Muck Dogs. Thank you. Is there any questions, Muck Dogs?
I just want to make a comment. I went to quite a few games this year. Just a great time, Robbie, just a real fun time. The atmosphere there was just absolutely tremendous. Everybody that was there was having fun, and that's, and you promised us that, and you came through for us, and, and I applaud you for that.
I have two grandsons who were probably in all those pictures, who got the autographs, who get them on their hats. For our family, it's been a real big deal, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your support. It was fun for us, too. Thank you.
Muck Dogs.
Marvelous.
Yeah.
We can, but we didn't put it up in PowerPoint. We had the handouts for that. Maybe go back and see.
Good lord.
We won't stay for the audit.
Five minutes for a cookie. If you need one more page, you could have put it...
Thanks, wow.
Had the opportunity to meet with the Audit Advisory Committee a couple of weeks ago to review the financial statements in detail and hopefully answered all the questions that they had. I'm happy to say that the audit went extremely well again this year. I want to thank, you know, Rachel and Lisa and all the staff that, you know, spent hours and hours, you know, preparing all the account, the records that we need to perform the audit in a timely manner. I know this year was a little bit of a challenge for them with the conversion to their new accounting software, you know, having to run new reports, looking for reports that were similar to last year, and just reports that would provide us with the information that we needed. And it was no small task, I'm sure, on their part, but they did a great job. When you do get your financial statements, I would encourage you to read the Management Discussion Analysis. That's about the first, you know, 12 or 15 pages of the report. That's actually a document written by management that does a really nice job of kind of telling the story behind the financial statements instead of reading 70 pages of accounting stuff. So I would encourage you to read that information. We do have an unmodified opinion this year, like we have in the past, and that's the highest level of assurance that we can provide in any audit. Means that you filed all generally accepted accounting principles, and we found no material misstatements in that information. So kudos to the accounting staff here at the, at the city. You do have a couple of slides in your packet. The first one shows the trend of your revenues and expenses. Revenues from operations increased about $284,000 or 1.7% over last year. And that was, the, the city finished the year very strong. I think that we were all very concerned about, you know, how the pandemic was going to impact some of your, your sales tax and other revenues, department revenues, with offices being closed and, you know, sales not coming in during the year. It performed, ended up performing very well at the end. Actually, the revenues were higher than, than expected, you know, given the pandemic situation. But during the pandemic, the, the city really responded, you know... But during the pandemic, the, the city really responded, you know, by holding the line on their expenditures, not filling open positions, and really, you know, taking a hard look at every single expenditure line to make sure that, you know, it was something that needed to be purchased or expended for the current fiscal year, to make sure that you did finish in a very strong position. You actually budgeted for a deficit this year of about $1 million, and because of primarily holding the line on the expenditures, you had a positive budget variance of about $1.5 million. So a very nice swing for the city. Slide two talks about your trend of your fund balance. And you can see that it varies quite a bit, you know, from year to year. But if you look at the 10-year average, it shows excess of revenues over expenditures, about $450,000, which is where you want to be over time. If you can smooth this out and have it be a little bit more steady is where you would want to go, but you're moving in the right direction as far as looking at the 10-year The next slide, slide three, talks about, you know, your revenues, your, or your different components of your fund balance. You know, some of your fund balances are very restrictive in nature. You put money aside, that's kind of your savings for rainy-day-type expenditures. You know, if you have a expenditure area that exceeds your budget appropriations, you can tap into some of those reserves. So that's the money that you put away for those types of items. And your total fund balance has steadily increased over the past 10 years. Again, you're moving in the right direction. This year, you utilize the reserves for purchases of equipment, facility renovations. You used approximately $1.1 million of your reserves this year, and you also provided to fund those reserves back up as part of the budget by about $850,000. So you're doing what you should be doing with your reserves. You're funding it up, and you're using it as, as necessary. And I believe that you have some information for next meeting for the further funding of some of these reserves. Slides four, five, and six kind of provides you with the, the balance sheet, which is a snapshot of the assets and liabilities of not only your general fund, but also your water and sewer funds, some of the primary funds of the, of the city. And for all of them, the balance sheet looks very, very healthy. You know, again, your sales and your non-property taxes rebounded at the end of the year. That helped you, lead you to an increase in your fund balance this year. In your water and sewer funds, you know, what we see there is that you have revenue from operations, net revenue from operations. So what that tells you is that the, the rates that you have set is enough to pay the expenditures. Now, on the water side, you had operating surpluses of about $644,000, and you had operating transfers to the general fund of 531. So a net positive impact to the water fund. On the sewer fund, the operating surplus was really very close to break even at $74,000, and you had an operating subsidy to the general fund to fund the, to fund the administrative costs of that fund to about $272,000. So that's a very high-level overview of the, the current year finances.
Yes, sir.
I notice there's, you're putting some money into workers' comp from unassigned to restricted. Is, is that, like, necessary, or is that important? I mean, isn't it the same thing? I mean, or what, why, why would we do that?
It's important because you are self-funded for your workers' comp. So what that means is you don't have an insurance policy that you pay a specific amount into every year, and it funds your losses regardless of whether they're $500,000 or 1.5 million. So you want to have money set aside for those unusual years where you have high claim costs, so that you can budget relatively stable, let's say, at a million dollars. And then, you have reserves in case you have unusual claim expenditures beyond that $1 million. You have money sitting aside, so you don't have, you know, ebbs and flows as far as budgetary impacts or financial impacts of being self-funded.
So being restricted pretty much locks it up for that purpose, and then it has to come through council to spend that money, where unassigned would be easily transferred without council approval? Is that, is that one of the reasons, too, or?
You've restricted it specifically for workers' comp, so you can use those funds specifically for workers' comp. Now, if you wanted to release those funds for another purpose, health insurance, a lost casualty outside of workers' comp, then you would need council approval to remove those restrictions. But as long as you spend that money for workers' comp, it does not need to be approved by council.
Okay, I got you. Okay, that makes sense.
Two years ago on the Audit Committee, we made a recommendation to strive, if possible, to someday attain $1 million. And this year, that was our recommendation from the committee to transfer some money into the restricted. But our, our goal at that point was to achieve $1 million in restricted, just so it takes council to release it.
Right, so it's pretty much locked away in its savings in case we need it for a rainy-day type thing?
Correct.
Makes sense.
Any other questions or concerns?
Anyone else have any concerns or questions?
I'd just like to make a comment and thank the staff and the auditors, and this year was really a kind of seamless audit. It just flowed, everything about it stood, everybody, questions were answered right on the spot, and I, I think it went really well. Probably the best audit meeting I've seen in a while, so.
I won't tell Laura that.
And, and to make a note, I mean, in 2017, that was an expected expenditure. We had a major purchase or something like that. So some of those ebbs and flows are planned, because we just have, we wait until we can swing it, and then we do it. So it makes that look like it's an uneven line, but those are a part of doing business. Sometimes we, that always comes up every year, like, what happened in 2017? Well, that was pretty much a planned thing. And then, you see where we dipped again during COVID. That was an unplanned thing, and, and we were lucky, and, and we had the gumption to stick it out and not spend any money and really tighten our belt, and it hurt. It hurt a lot of agency, of our departments. We need to catch up on some of that over a period of time. At some point, we got to get that done. But we were able to come through okay, so I'm glad that happened.
Yeah, you did, you fared better than expected.
Yeah.
One surprise, we were all shocked with, with COVID, because we thought we'd suffer some substantial losses, and everybody started, Amazon, I mean, Amazon has five deliveries a day on my street.
And that was the first year, I think, the state was collecting the sales tax, too.
That's been helped.
So a lot of these things helped, but I think having good budgeting over the period of many years gave us a little bit of reserve to kind of weather the storm, so to speak. And where, that's why we like to really plan ahead, so we don't, don't get into so many crazy expenses where we were behind, so.
And that's exactly the importance of reserves, is to have funds set aside for, you know, those planned expenditures. You know, you have time to put away money to do those big expenditures, or heaven forbid, you know, live through a pandemic.
Yeah, I don't think anybody planned an expenditure for that, but luckily, I think it all worked out for us, so we're glad, I'm glad that that happened. So any, any other questions? Doing the best we can. Thank you very much for your time and effort. I really appreciate the work you guys do, so.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, and now, because of, she mentioned something about that, you're gonna cover the, what assigned fund, what transfers we're gonna make to various reserves, Rachel?
Correct, and these would be recommendations that I've reviewed with the Audit Committee, and they've also agreed to these as well. As you remember, we were not fortunate enough to have this last year, so we weren't able to recommend any unassigned fund balance to reserves. But this year, not only are we recommending $711,000 in the general fund and $50,000 in workers' comp to what, you know, you already mentioned, to restricted, we are able to raise our fund balance to 15% of the general fund expenses. So we were at 10% last year. We're at 15% this year, in light of, this year's expenses were actually down, but in terms of how council moved last June to try to see the fund balance between 15 and 25% unassigned, to whether any types of storms, we're moving in the right direction. So I'll just go through a few of the highlights of the recommendations and ask that you'd move this to a future business meeting. I don't have it for tonight's meeting. So on the general fund side, my recommendation is $50,000 in police reserves. At least two vehicles will be able to replace next year with this allocation. Currently, the oldest patrol vehicle we have is a 2015, and the oldest detective car is a 2009. So the chief does a great job keeping a vehicle schedule up to date and making sure I know what, what needs to be replaced, and we try to do so as often as we can. The DPW equipment reserve, I'm requesting $100,000 be funded to that reserve. The equipment replacement plan for a DPW is very sizable. We need to replace three single-axle dump trucks with plows, six sedans, and four 4x4 pickup trucks with plows, plus a one-ton dump truck by the end of 2025. So we're going to need to continue to build the reserves to make sure we can make those equipment purchases. Overall, that would cost us about $1.38 million. By allocating 100,000 of reserves now, we'll be moving that fund to 437,000. So we're moving in the right direction to try to make those purchases. Facility reserves, 136,000 is my recommendation. As with any building, regular maintenance and capital improvements are necessary in order to preserve the functionality of the building, to avoid significant or possible catastrophic repairs or improvements due to neglect. Multiple proposals will benefit from a healthy facility reserve, including work for the new police station, the $1 million facilities project split between the Fire Department and the Bureau of Maintenance, and city center and other facility projects in the future. Compensated absences, we overall have a liability of $1.94 million compensated absences, but those aren't paid out every single year. So what we like to do is determine the likely retirees and figure out what we'd need to pay out this year, and that amount is about $99,000. We do have some funds in there, so we're only asking for $75,000 to be committed to reserves. The parking lot reserves, looking for $100,000 to maintain multiple parking and sports surfaces throughout the city. The city has a parking lot plan, and thanks to Ray many years ago, who created it, to improve lots and surfaces over time. It looks like the parking lots that we wish to be repaid by 2025 include Williams Street, the Court Street Plaza, which is the Aldi's parking lot here, which is a very large one, and also the Bureau of Maintenance parking lot is on the list as well. Lastly, the biggest allocation I'm asking council to consider is to healthcare reserves. We need to continue to fund the health insurance to be able to maintain the fund balance in the general fund. In the last two years, the city has had several high-value claims and had to fund health insurance at larger-than-anticipated amounts. So by adding $250,000 to the healthcare fund, we'll be able to build back the funds that were spent in the last two years. We already discussed the workers' compensation fund reserve, and as I mentioned, it's my recommendation that council consider these appropriations for reserve accounts.
Okay, any questions?
I did that for real.
Any other questions? Okay, so are we in consensus to move this to a future business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Now you have the sales tax allocation agreement?
Thank you, Council President. In the late spring, the county approached the city with a request to modify the sales tax agreement between the county and the city. The modification does not affect the city's current distribution, but is needed so the county can distribute funds to the towns and villages, and the towns can use those funds in their B fund, or what's considered the town outside village. Under the first revenue-sharing distribution model that the county implemented, it was discovered that the towns with villages could not allocate the revenues from the county into their B fund, or the town outside village. So to remedy these terms, the county would like to see a revenue distribution in the sales tax agreement. Only one sales tax agreement can exist within a county. So the county had worked with our attorney, George Van Ness, and the comptroller's office, and then all the towns and villages to bring this agreement forward. George, do you have anything to add?
Yes, as Rachel indicated, it does not affect the city's agreement in any way, other than adding provisions to it to address the other municipalities, so that the county's comfortable that they're properly addressing their distribution to those entities. I did participate in a number of phone calls with the county attorney and the comptroller's office attorneys, and they're comfortable with the form of the agreement. So obviously, the county wants to move it forward and has already taken that step, so we're bringing it to council tonight for consideration to move it forward, to amend it as noted.
George, will each town get the same amount?
Yeah, I think there's a formula that they've set forth that basically would be distributed according to an allocation percentage. But that's gonna be up to the county and the municipalities as well. It's just, if it's not in the agreement, they can't do it through, through the sales tax allocation model.
So our part has stayed the same, it's just...
Yeah, the city stays exactly the same.
It's adding it for the benefit of the towns and villages. It's kind of a separate clause in our contract that...
Yeah, when the, when the county manager came to Rachel, and we had a meeting with the county manager, county attorney, you know, we indicated that, subject to council approval, we'd consider it. We just don't want this process to be drawn out or be problematic for the underlying agreement. Talking to the comptroller's office along with the county attorney, it seems like everything is fairly smooth here from the comptroller's review and ultimate approval process. It does not have to go through further legislation, that's already done. So this is a matter of the comptroller's office just reviewing the amended agreement should council approve it.
George, with, as my understanding, the comptroller declared the existing agreement is not being in compliance. Is that what occurred?
I don't know that they specifically did that. I think it was more of an issue for the county identifying this area of concern and wanting to make sure that the accounting process for those outlined municipalities was done properly so that they could receive the funds. And that's why the county came to us to try to fix this through this model. There was obviously a lot of effort on behalf of the county, the county manager, county attorney, and legislatures to try to do the right thing for the outlined municipalities. And ultimately, this was determined to be the best path.
I just find this kind of interesting, since it was the comptroller that delayed the whole thing because of the 40-year agreement and didn't want us to, you know, they, they didn't want to deal with that and wanted to go through the legislature to get that done. And I'm surprised they didn't catch this. They were looking at everything else. Why didn't they catch this part? I mean, it was a year ago or more than that when we signed this original agreement, pre-COVID.
Yeah, it was a couple of years ago. You know, and ultimately, I think the comptroller's office actually acted fairly quickly. The delay, as I recall, was getting it from the legislature to the governor's office and the governor actually signing it.
Sorry, he waited till the last, like, it was like really almost timed out before he signed it.
Right, but you, you're correct that this was a, an issue that kind of cropped out that, that wasn't really forecast by the parties at the time, and although it doesn't affect the city directly, it does affect the outlined municipalities.
Right, because I remember conversation, talking about taking, it was originally in the original agreement, and they said, "We don't need that in there," and then, I guess they do. So lesson learned. I guess it was a long time ago, and, and people move on, so now it's all, this should resolve it, as far as you're concerned, George?
Yeah, from the standpoint of the city, nothing changes. It's just, we're part of the agreement, so we need to sign off and approve it if council chooses to do so. But to the extent that it doesn't change the city's formula, the term, anything associated with the city's distribution, I think it's acceptable. The comptroller's office generally seems to be accepting of the approach and the language here, so I think it's appropriate to move it forward should it choose to do that.
Okay. Anyone else? So this will get moved if we so decide to tonight's business meeting to resolve this thing, because it's been going on for several weeks now. They've been going back and forth and hammering this out. So that's approved? Okay, so that gets moved to tonight's business. Highland Park Streetlight?
Thank you, Council President. The police department noticed an issue with lighting on Highland Ave that affects public safety. After consultation with the superintendent of water and wastewater, the departments recommended an additional light fixture on an existing pole. Because it was a matter of public safety, National Grid has put that light up, or will do so shortly if they have not already. But the fixture needs to be memorialized with a council resolution, so it's before you tonight, and I'd recommend, if you could, please move it to the business meeting as well.
Any questions in that?
I just want to thank Chief Higginson for, you know, addressing this issue, because it was a problem. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, so we're in consensus... Okay, so we're in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting? That gets moved. The VFD drive at water treatment?
The VFD drive on the high-service pump at the water treatment plant failed and needs to be replaced. Because the cost of the replacement exceeded $20,000, it needed to be competitively bid, which Bill Davis, Superintendent of Water and Wastage, the two bids were received from Bailey Electric Motor Supply of $23,887, and O'Connell Electric from Buffalo at $52,840. So, we have a recommendation to purchase the Bailey Electric Motor Supply pump for the water treatment plant.
And I see that Bailey is out of coffee in New York, so it's a county business that we'll be doing business with, so... Big difference in the estimates, I'll tell you that.
Double, more than double.
Almost more than double. So, that's why we put it out to bid, we resolve these things, we save some money. So, this will get moved to tonight's business, because it's kind of a semi-emergency. Any questions on that? So, are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business?
We're buying it from Bailey, and Abel's hooking it up.
Say that again?
Chuck Abel is hooking it up.
I'll ask Bell, who's hooking it up.
He's a great electrician. Let me see what he's doing.
All right, so that gets moved to tonight's business. Motion to adjourn? Mr. Beely, seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Okay, that ends the special conference. I now call to order the regular business meeting. You've had in your packet the July 2021 financials. They were much easier to read this time. Hopefully, you've looked them over. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Bob?
Yeah, just for my own information, under the K-9 fund, and it says right now we're at 136% of budget.
Is that page three of nine?
Yes.
Okay. And on the K-9 fund?
This is annual budget, about 950. Year-to-date actual amount, 1290.
Of 90, 24.
Yes, so when we, we only, we budgeted nothing, correct? Let me make sure. We budgeted $950, because we were going to depend on previous donations to cover those costs. So, we do, there's a separate accounting for that fund on the side that shows where we're at. And actually, we've got a lot of donations. I don't know if Chief has the...
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's why this jumped out at me. Where's the donations?
Well, we don't actually put them into the budget, so you'll never see them here. So, in the background, we have, you know, you can see what was, we received previously budget adjustment in here at some point, because we have to put the money in. So, you will see a budget adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? So, we approve the July 2021 financials. You have also, in your email, and also, I believe, in your packet, there was the August 2021 minutes for you to look at. Any corrections or omissions or concerns? So, we're all in consensus to approve the August 2021 minutes. You have approved. The agenda items, item 58, 2021, the resolution for the Seeker, for the, that's the one that we had to insert.
Yep, for 211, 211 and 1/2 East Main.
Yes, for the, yeah, 211 and 211 and 1/2 East, or East Main Street. Who wants to take that one? 63, 2021, the ordinance 190 entitled zoning. That's to cover the same thing, I believe.
That's the ordinance to rezone.
That 211, and Paul wants that one. 64, 2021, the negative declaration of environmental significance. Ms. Pacino? 65, 2021, the sales tax agreement that we just talked about. Ms. Christian? 66, 2021, the streetlight on Highland. Kathy Briggs? And number 67, 2021, that's the one that I got confused. It's going to be in your special conference packet. The original is not in your business meeting, so whoever wants that one, I will give you this, so you can read it. It's the water VFD drive purchase?
I'll take it.
Okay. Got it? Okay. All right, city attorney's report.
Just quickly, we have a code docket this month, and we're planning to have code docket this in future months. Now, LCA is looking at the force for those special matters, so we're planning to be able to keep those matters as appropriate, and then just one matter for executive session.
Any questions of the city attorney? Okay, city managers' report?
Yep, I want to mention a few things. The mall roof, we've been waiting on decking materials to come in. As they peeled off portions of the deck, they saw that the, the, what's the word? Insulation was acidic, I got it, and was eating away at parts of the deck when it became wet. So, there's a little more work than they expected. We will be back to let you know what, if anything, on budget overruns for the second portion of the mall roof. But we have been experiencing materials delays on that roof, just so everyone's aware. The wastewater treatment plant, we finalized the air header system, but we're waiting for the ponds to basically right themselves, injecting more air into them, and hopefully that will improve the quality of the air around the ponds as we move forward. I wanted to note that we have 339 more people in Ward 6 that were found via the census in, then in 2010, so that was a good thing, and we blew the targets out of the water. We did not decline as much as everyone anticipated to like 14,000. We're at 15,600 people. So, the efforts of the census committee, it was very well done to make sure we had a better count than they have.
Our final count is 15,600? So, that's an increase of, did we do the math on that? I think we had 14,000 something last time, right?
That was the, that was the projected, the 14,000. So, we did go down, but we didn't go down as much as projected.
Dr. Districting?
Our districting, it does not. Felipe looked at it, and it does not affect the districting, because nothing changed more than 10%. Ironically, Ward 1 went down 8.2%, and that was the biggest swing. And I don't know if it's because people weren't contacted, or if it's empty nesters now, moving in that ward. Couple other things, I've been starting to meet with a group of ice rink folks who are interested in finding ways to fund projects at the ice rink outside of the city's budget. So, we're trying to come up with ways that we can potentially do some projects there, and it's in the very early stages, but we are getting together. The ARPA funding that we have, roughly $1.4 million, I'll be preparing a presentation for council next week with the funding, how we can and cannot use it, and recommendations on how we should use it moving forward, with approvals for council to look at at a conference meeting, next meeting. Still working on the capital improvement plan and rate study for water and sewer. Obviously, you know, we finished the audit. Departments are going to be preparing the six-month spending plan reviews, where they put in, you know, we know what they've spent the first six months, and now they're going to tell us what they're going to spend the next six months. Courts reopened, code cases are being heard. Police Station RFP for Architecture and Engineering has been released. We actually have a meeting tomorrow here in the chamber for any interested architects and engineers that want to come out and learn more about the project before they submit their proposals. And the police station bonding prep activities have begun. They'll be ready in November and December. I want to thank Jill Weidrich, I was called you Babinski, that's her maiden name. She's been on board with us for two months. She couldn't make the first meeting, so I wanted to say hello and officially introduce her. She's hit the ground running. She's working on the software projects the city has and assisting the inspections office, codes office, you can call her at any time for that. And she's also reviewing our current fee schedules down in this inspections office as well, in relationship to the software project. Also, Brett Frank, who's not here tonight, was hired by the BDC this past month and is working to get up to speed. There are a few key positions that are open and being advertised. And that is my long-winded, very detailed report.
Any questions for Rachel?
Actually, yes, I do. Are we getting pretty close to getting funding for the police department, the new police department?
Yes, so we're working on bond resolutions right now that'll come to council at the end of November. So, to prepare to bond out the project, we will be doing that in the next few months. We have to just prepare the resolutions and bring them forward.
Nice, I mean, I'm looking forward to this, because it's been a long, long time, and the can has stopped now, so there's no more kicking it. Good, thank you.
Yep, and once, just for clarity's sake, the architecture and engineering proposals will come forward with a recommendation to council roughly the same time, November, December, to hire that firm that'll start the design and engineering of the police station. So, the two things go hand in hand. You're going to bond, and you're going to start design and engineering for the Alva Street site.
Any other questions? Okay, committee reports? I don't see anyone, so. Go ahead.
I have just one. Bid is getting ready for their annual wine walk, which will be the first Saturday in October, and it helps all the businesses downtown, bringing people in. And they have sales, and they have a lot of fun, and they usually have a theme, so you might think about it. While I'm there, I'm going to add that at Go Art, they're having a celebrity bartender thing, where you compete with other people, and they want people who are known in the community, which all of us are. So, if you would consider being a celebrity bartender, earning money for Go Art, let me know. The end.
Yeah, I'd just like to make everyone aware, the city attended the 9/11 memorial service at the VFW on Saturday, and we had excellent attendance, the council president, myself, representing council, the city manager was there, police department, fire department, Assemblyman Holly spoke. I got to speak, I was very grateful for that, and we presented a proclamation to the VFW, because they do a lot of things people don't realize. They run a lot of programs, and they're really there batting for the veterans. And of course, the police department and the fire department had some veterans on board with some good backgrounds and good history, and it was great that everyone showed up, and it was a nice turnout.
I don't believe we have any unfinished business.
Yes, we do. I have unfinished business.
Okay, the definition is like a topic that we discussed at a previous meeting that we tabled or put aside, so...
Yeah, well, it would be, we had to put aside, because you decided to put it aside, Assemblyman Holly's bill with the separation of New York State. And down here, the bill is A05591. The action would mean to refer to local governments, which we are local governments. I think we have a right to bring this forth, so people will be able to vote on it next year and leave it up to every resident in the state of New York if they want to do it or not do it. You should not be able to tell me that we shouldn't bring this forth, okay?
I don't recall telling you that.
Oh, yes, you did.
I recall telling you that I didn't think it was appropriate for this council to get involved in.
Well, I think it is. It is appropriate, for local governments. We are a local government, and I want to see this, and I...
Well, there's eight other people here that need to weigh in, so are you bringing this up as a topic, or what are you doing exactly?
I'm bringing it up as a topic, and I want it brought to our next meeting, so we could discuss it.
Okay, so we'll put it on the next week, next conference agenda.
Okay, good.
And that's what I think we intended to do, but you never got back to us.
No, you didn't. You might be able to bullshit these other people, but you ain't going to do it to me.
You know, would you please watch your language, Rosemary?
Oh, yes, I mean, oh, jeez, I...
We're on, we're on video, and there might be some young child watching.
Oh, hey, oh, please, give me a break with the language that's out there now. Are you serious?
Are you done?
Yes, please put that on for our next meeting. Thank you. I'm done.
Anyone else? Okay. Bob, resolution 58, 2021?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution establishing the City of Batavia as lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, Seeker, and issuing a negative declaration.
Seconded by, Mr. McGinnis? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 64, 2021, Ms. Pacino?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution issuing negative declaration of environmental significance.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs? Any questions or concern? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution 65, 2021, Ms. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move a resolution to approve the modified and restated sales tax allocation agreement between the City of Batavia and the County of Genesee.
Seconded by, Mr. Beely? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Christian?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
And resolution 66, 2021, Ms. Briggs, please.
I move a resolution authorizing installation of streetlight on Highland Park.
Seconded by, Mr. Beely? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Okay, if you would take us into executive session, please. That was it?
That was it?
Did I miss one?
No.
67 was the last one.
I'm sorry.
I don't know. Go ahead.
Whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1F of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading Whereas Article VII, Section 105.1F of the Public Officer's Law permits the legislative